Good evening. I call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, June 15, 2022. So the first order of business is to confirm that the agenda has been posted and that we have all members present and accounted for. However, two of them are with us on the speakerphone over there, but they can hear us and they can provide comments and so on. Next, let's...I'll wait till you get that.
Oh, okay.
Very good, okay. Would you please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So...
You're good, you're good. Just keep talking.
Okay.
Yeah, just keep talking.
Okay, I'll give you a second to check the...check the mic. All right. So the first thing we do at any of the Planning Commission meetings is we hold a general public comment period. And so at this point, folks are allowed to come up and speak or call in and speak on any issue that's currently on tonight's agenda. Sorry, that's just a little distracting. So anyway, however, each of the items on the agenda tonight are in fact also public hearings, so you'll have an opportunity to speak during that agenda item as well. But if you'd like to be heard right now at this time on...
Eight minutes.
That comes...if you'd like to be heard at this moment about any item on the agenda, please feel free to step up to the dais and, I'm sorry, up to the microphone and state your name. All right. Seeing no one in the audience, do we have any...anyone on the phone that would like to be heard during this public comment period? I'll take that as a no.
Well, I don't know how they can reply.
Oh, I see. Okay. So for those in the audience, we have a bit of a delay between real time here and what the folks who are streaming this would see, so we're going to wait about 30 more seconds. So what I would say is if anyone in the virtual audience has a comment, the call-in number is 702-589-9629. Hearing no comments, I would ask the deputy city clerk if we have any comments that have been provided via email.
Chairman, I do. The first comment is...
Pick up your mic and talk into it.
The first comment is from Mr. Paul Curry, and this is related to the item of the MPA- dash 22-042. He says, "I am opposed to this for Damon Goobler. I do not approve, and I am opposed to this." The next public comment submitted was from Ann Angora, and she says, "I oppose the building of a grocery store and retail shops on Veterans Parkway near Gingerwood Mobile Home Park. I also would like to point out that we are under a severe water shortage, and I think all buildings should be stopped for now." That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. With that, we close the initial public comment period of this meeting and move on to the agenda items for action. The first order of business is approval of the minutes of the May 18, 2022 regular Planning Commission meeting. Do we have any comments from the commission? No comments? I think...
Ask for a motion.
Right, right. So you have a motion on this one, too.
I move that the minutes be...
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The minutes pass as written. Second agenda item for possible action is CU-22-274. This is Resolution Number 1212 for Catherine and Taylor Call of 443 Nevada Way. This is a public hearing on an application for a conditional use permit in the C2 general commercial zone for an outdoor sales. It happens to be a food vendor trailer pursuant to Section 11 of the City Code. Susan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicants have requested a conditional use permit to operate a food vendor trailer, essentially a shaved ice stand, on the subject property. The proposal is to keep the trailer permanently on site during their active season from April or May through sometime in October, and a similar food vendor trailer conditional use permit was previously approved at this location in 2016. The subject property is a vacant lot downtown, and it's located between two commercial buildings fronting on Nevada Way. The property is divided by a fence, and the trailer will be located in front of the fence facing Nevada Way. And because of the buildings on either side, it's not going to be prominently visible to the downtown area. If this permit is approved, the applicant would not have to come back to the Planning Commission again for operation of the trailer next year or in future years as proposed, unless the Planning Commission chooses to establish some form of a time limit and require As the staff report notes, we don't have any specific code standards related to food trailers per se, so there are no design standards, just as there are no design standards for commercial buildings in the city, other than limited standards within the historic district. But they would not apply, however, to structures such as a vehicle. Until the city adopts specific standards or code amendments to further regulate or otherwise prohibit these uses, the best alternative in the interim is to impose a condition on such requests that states that they would be subject to further review and approval should the city choose to further regulate these types of uses. And so that condition is listed in the attached resolution. The city is not working on those draft code amendments at this time. We've got other priorities. So in the meantime, as you can see from the past information in the packet, there have been several other food vendor trailers approved throughout the city over the years, although currently the only active site is downtown at the corner of Nevada Way and Arizona on the Two Wheels property.
Thank you, Susan.
I'm sorry.
All righty, no problem. I'll start out with a question. I'm looking at the drawing of the site that this trailer would occupy. It shows...it appears the green shaded area, and this is the drawing I'm looking at here. The green shaded area looks rather deep, and if you look at the...if you go to the site, the trailers act...the site isn't much deeper than the trailer itself. This drawing, granted realizing it's just very provisional, shows tables and chairs that would appear to me to go out far enough away from the trailer that they'd have to be sitting in the sidewalk. The question I have is, what is the city's policy or code on chairs and tables on the sidewalk?
Well, for one thing, I'm sure since the applicant...this is obviously not a scaled site plan.
Right.
They basically are using boxes and circles to the best of their ability. If they are located on the sidewalk, it would require approval from the Public Works Department for, basically, I believe they call it encroachment license. There are other restaurants downtown, as you know, that have sidewalks and, excuse me, chairs and tables on the sidewalk. So if that were proposed here, they would need approval from Public Works. But it's possible that the trailer and the chairs and tables can all fit on private property without encroaching into the right-of-way. We just don't have an accurate site plan at this time.
Very good. Second question I have, and I'll probably ask this of the applicant as well. I noticed in that same drawing that they indicate extension cords to run the trailer and the freezer behind the trailer, and that the outlet is kind of on the far side of the property. That seems...well, I guess I'll just ask the question this way. Are businesses allowed to run extension cords pretty much across the property for a semi...you know, for what would be, in essence, a fairly long-term occupancy?
No, they would not be. It was not allowed with the permit in 2016. It wouldn't be allowed at this time. What the resolution states is that the applicant's going to need to comply with all requirements of city departments as well as other agencies.
Right.
So once the business license is applied for, then the Building Division would impose whatever requirements apply to their codes. Likewise, Public Works, if they're going to do anything in right-of-way. And the Health District will have to provide their approval before the business license gets issued as well.
Thank you, Susan. I appreciate that. Does anyone else have questions of staff?
She just answered what I had.
Okay. All right. Mr. Marvin?
Yes. Just what I'm curious about, I think it's about three months of a closure during the winter, something like that. So does the cart, does it stay there during those three months?
I believe there's...I believe their statement indicates that the trailer would just be there during their operation times. I mean, it's not planned to go back and forth during the months they're operating, but it would be removed in the wintertime, I believe it states. Under trailer permits, it says the trailer will be on the property for the entirety of the aforementioned season. It will be towed away after closing day in mid-October.
Any additional questions? For Mr. Lassoff, Mr. Biase, any questions of staff? Very good. Is the applicant here? And if so, would you please stand up and approach the microphone and state your name for the record?
Catherine Call.
I'm Taylor Call.
Thank you.
Can you say your name again? I'm sorry.
Yeah. Catherine Call.
Taylor Call.
Thank you. Do you have anything you'd like to add before we quiz you?
You can go ahead and ask questions. That's fine.
All right. Well, I'm just going to start with basically the same first question that I asked Susan and pose it more, is that your intent to stay, to kind of keep your operation, tables, et cetera, kind of off of the sidewalk and in that actual recessed area or otherwise?
Yeah, so we're planning to stay completely inside that turf area. We would not go into the sidewalk, and the tables and chairs would come later in the season after we see if people even stay at the location. So that is kind of flexible for us throughout the season. But we'll all be in the turf.
Very good. Thank you. That was the sum of my questions for the applicant. Does anyone else have questions? No other questions? All right. Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to be heard on this matter, please stand and approach the microphone and again, state your name.
My name is Bill Rackey, and I'm one of the people that are in the area that they sent a letter to concerning this. And I believe the property is owned by the Pose. Is that correct?
Yes.
We don't have that information at all. I just want to make a comment that I suggested to Kay, the owner, a couple of years ago, to use that spot as a food vending trailer, and he's finally got around to doing it. So I full-heartedly approve of it being done. That's the comment I wanted to make.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to be heard on this matter? In that case, we'll go back to the virtual audience. This is a public comment period on the conditional use permit regarding the food vending trailer to be located on Nevada Way. If you have comments, please call in to 702-589-9629. Hearing no comments, we'll close the public comment period of this item and move it back to the Planning Commission for deliberation and possibly a motion. Would anyone like to tender a motion?
I guess I have one question. I think it spells it out in here, but this will not convey to another owner. This is only for this owner, for this...for actually an unlimited timeframe?
It's written for an unlimited timeframe. There's a footnote or an end note in the staff report that if you want to require reapproval in a year, you can add an extra condition for that. In terms of transfer, what the code states now is that a conditional use permit can be transferred to another operator if they agree to abide by exactly the same information that was presented to the Planning Commission for the first operator. And if not, then it would have to come back to the Planning Commission. There are some types of use permits where the transfer is routine. For instance, mini storage facilities are a conditional use in the C2 zone. So when those change ownership, you know, we used to have to bring every change of ownership back to the Planning Commission, and we don't have to do that anymore. But again, the qualifying provision is that a new operator would have to do it exactly the same way. And since a new operator in this case, if the calls were to sell the business, they'd have to sell the trailer that you're seeing in the photographs provided to you and do exactly what the calls are proposing to do. So if they choose to move their business elsewhere and somebody else wants to put a different food trailer on this site, that would have to come back to the Planning Commission.
Question.
Sure.
Susan, you were talking about some of the other ones that had surfaced over the years. Are any of those on a restricted timeframe?
There's a chart in the packet. The only active one is the one at the corner of Nevada and Arizona, and that one was approved without a time limit.
Is that...that's Nevada and Wyoming, isn't it?
I'm sorry. You're right, Nevada and Wyoming. Thank you.
So if I could, I think the discussions that have taken place in the past that whereby the Planning Commission did in fact impose a time limit, say a year, to come back and, you know, basically renew, if you will, the conditional use permit, I think it had a lot to do with concerns as to whether or not the use would be compatible with the area. And in...over the course of time, it's become clear to me, because I often was one that would suggest a year time limit. It's become apparent to me that the city has multiple opportunities, I guess I'll say, to revisit a conditional use permit if there were concerns by neighbors, the city itself, and that sort of thing, so that we could in fact...I don't know if the right term is terminate, conditional use permit, but at least revisit it and speak with the Any other questions or comments on this item?
Mr. Chairman, Sir Biase, I'm having extreme difficulty hearing you in a sense of...probably if you could speak up louder or something. I think I picked up the gist of the question.
I believe Tom asked, and that had to do with whether we could impose, let's say, a condition on this to have it come back to the Planning Commission, since the current code doesn't require it. Is that...is that my understanding of what the gist of that conversation was?
If I may, the answer is yes, but what the chairman also pointed out is that other than having an automatic renewal built in as a condition, what the resolution states is under Condition Number Three, "The use shall not create nuisances to surrounding properties. The use is subject to additional public hearings should there be repeated or unresolved substantive complaints regarding the use, or should there be any violations of these conditions that are not corrected in a timely manner..." Excuse me. "...any conditional use permit is subject to the revocation procedures of the City Code."
Wow. Mr. Chairman, I...again, I'm having great difficulty. I'm going to apologize, but I think the only thing I would like to say just is that I am not in favor of approving this unless we put a condition on it that has it come back to review for...back to the Commission for review, let's say, after a year, just to ensure that we are still in favor of keeping it there. I would rather not see what amounts to an automatic blessing of it unless it was to change hands and change business. So that's basically my comment to the other commissioners.
All right. Thank you for that comment. Does anyone else have a comment following that?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if...Mr. Biase, can you hear me? Member Biase?
I can hear you...I can hear you better now. It's just everybody is coming across extremely soft.
Okay. What you may want to do...are you also live streaming the meeting?
No, I am not.
Okay. That would help, because then what you could do is you could put your phone on mute when you're not speaking and listen to the meeting live streaming, and then you should be able to hear everything that's going on.
That doesn't work.
Really?
Yeah, because I call in probably the most out of everybody. There is literally like a four or five-second delay. So when you're on the phone, we've already voted and gone on to something, and they're just, you know, getting to something. So it's like you can watch it, but you can't listen to it.
You don't get the sound?
I can hear Mr. Rudd very clearly because he's speaking well into the microphone.
I feel your pain. I've called in quite a few times.
I have a question.
Please go ahead, Mr. Marvin.
I guess in response to what Ernie was saying, my understanding from what Susan was saying is that anytime you have a conditional use like that, if there's an issue that comes up with that usage, then that can be retracted and would no longer be there. So I'm not sure that an annual renewal is really a needed thing.
And I would tend to agree with that.
I agree.
Yes, I agree. We have, you know, we have code enforcement and we have the Health Department, and I think it would be redundant to, you know, go over it every year or even after one year.
All right. Thank you for those insights. Anyone else before I make a motion?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Lassoff. I haven't heard a compelling reason to need a renewal meeting in a year, so I'm not sure that we need a time requirement or a time limit.
Very good. Thank you. With that, I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 1212, as written, which includes findings and conditions for approval of CU-22-274. All in favor?
I'll second the motion.
Oops, sorry. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations, and we'll look forward to some shaved ice. You had your chance when the applicant was up. Anyway, all right. That moves us on to agenda item number three for possible action. This is matters pertaining to 301 Ridge Road. And so this is divided into two sections. Items A, B, and C include a neighborhood meeting to explain master plan amendment per Nevada revised statutes. It also includes the public hearing... It also includes the public hearing on a master plan amendment and then a resolution. So I would look to Susan for an overview, please.
Thank you. The property in question is 301 Ridge Road, and as the staff report notes, this is a rather large property off of Ridge Road, and it became larger after the applicant purchased it because he purchased additional land from the city, which was referred to as tract 351. And that brings the total property to 1.1 acres in size. However, it is city policy that when people purchase land from the city, that we want the zoning and master plan to match. In this case, the zoning already matches, it's in the R18 single-family residential zone, but the master plan still has the old category for the tract of open lands. And since we're moving forward and now with other zoning approvals, which also reference the master plan, it's the appropriate timing to update the master plan so that that tract that he purchased and that is now part of 301 Ridge Road have the same master plan designation, which is low-density residential, and that is the master plan category that corresponds to the single-family zones. And so one of the requirements of state law is that the applicant for a master plan amendment, and in this case, when the city sells a property to somebody, the city acts as the applicant. The state law requires that we hold quote-unquote "a neighborhood meeting" because it doesn't otherwise require public hearing noticing like it does for a rezoning. So instead, especially also since there is a variance related to this request, the neighborhood meeting is being held here. All the property owners within 750 feet were notified of that. This is the standard procedure for a master plan amendment when the city is the sponsor. So by my explaining the purpose of the master plan amendment, that satisfies the state requirement for this neighborhood meeting to explain the purpose of the master plan amendment. That's exactly what state law requires that meeting for. So staff can certainly answer any questions of the commission, but we consider this to be a routine matter to bring the property so that everything is under the same land use category as it is for zoning. And the attached resolution is for approval by, per statute, the two-thirds majority of the planning commission, which would be at least five, you know, votes in favor of. And then this is a recommendation that would go to city council. If for some reason you have less than five people voting, I have an alternate version of the resolution to provide you, or even if you recommend a denial, a version for that as well. Master plan amendments are sort of a special category under state law, so we have to try to fit their proper way of funneling this to the city council. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do any of the commission members have questions of staff? Mr. Lassoff, Mr. Biaski, any questions of city staff?
None for me.
All righty, thank you. Seeing no questions on this matter, we open the public hearing portion of this item. If anyone would like to be heard on this matter, please step forward to the microphone. We're going to go ahead and take the phone call first, sorry.
Hi, this is the planning commission. Go ahead.
Hi, about a proposed project supposed to go on today at the city council meeting.
This is a planning commission meeting?
Yes, it's for, yes, the one for the land bordering Gingerwood, Mobile Home Park.
You have to tell her it's not this item.
We are not on that item currently.
Okay, I just wanted to vote no, I was told I could call and vote no.
We'll be on that item next, we're on item three.
Nope, there's another item.
Do I call back, or I can't go in person?
Welcome to call back.
Let me get your phone number, it's 702, what is it?
204, 204, 9073.
All right, we will let you know.
And my husband also, same household, he has a different number.
We'll let you know, we'll let you know when it's time to call back.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Would anyone in the audience wish to be heard on this matter? And again, this is simply the master plan amendment to bring the two tracts of land owned by the applicant into conformity with one another.
You guys are really going to have to talk into your mouths.
I can't hear you at all.
Oh, really?
I know.
Ah, okay. Well, then I appreciate that, I'll try and speak a little louder.
Thank you.
All right. So seeing no comments to this item, we move it back, we'll close the public comment period of this item, A, B, and C, and bring it back to the planning commission for deliberation and a motion. Does anyone have anything to add? Beth, thank you.
I'd like clarification, we're just on C right now, we're going to handle C and D separately, or?
Correct.
Thank you.
Separately, yes.
Just item C now.
Right. Thank you, no questions.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions? Any comments? Okay. I guess I would make the comment that this is in fact a fairly routine matter, just to bring two parcels of land that were purchased and joined into the same zoning, well, the zoning is already there, and into the same master plan category. As such, does anyone have any comments at all, or any deliberation up here? If not, I'd be happy to make a motion. All right. So I move to approve Resolution Number 1213, which includes findings for recommendation in favor of MP-A-22-042. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have one more opportunity at this moment for comments from the commission. In absence of comments, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Or denote, right? All in favor? That motion passes, which brings us to item D. Again, the applicant is Damon Gubler, and this is a public hearing on an application for a variance in the R1-8 single-family residential zone to permit a new house with a rear setback of 10 points, or 10 feet six inches, whereas Section 11 of the city code requires a minimum rear setback of 20 feet. Could we get the staff insights on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant plans to construct a custom home on this property and has submitted plans with the home at a setback of 10 foot six inches to the rear south property line, which requires a variance because 20 feet is otherwise required. The city code defines the front lot line as that along a street, and the rear lot line is the most distant from and most nearly parallel to the front lot line. The code does not require the front of a house to face the front property line. That's a pretty common situation on corner lots, we don't dictate which way you face your house. The front property lines and rear property lines are all determined based on where the street is located. As noted in the prior report, this is a very large lot, it's just over an one acre in size, and it is presently a vacant lot, which means there is nothing impeding the owner from designing a home that would comply with the setback requirements. The applicant had indicated he just assumed that the east property line was the rear property line in this case. There is room to shift the house to the north in order to comply with the required rear setback. Doing so, however, would place the home closer to a retaining wall that the applicant built, and apparently he does not wish to do that. The staff report goes over the five required criteria that the planning commission have to find in favor of in order to be able to approve a variance request. Staff does not make recommendations on variances, so therefore there are alternate findings that can be used to either approve or deny the request. If the request is approved, staff is recommending the one standard condition, being that the variance approval is based on the plans before you. It would not entitle the applicant to shift the building or move it closer, you know, if you based, if you approved the plans he's provided to you tonight. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone on the commission have questions of staff?
Do we have any other plot plans that show placement of the home on the lot better than what we have here? We have like overviews, and we have like a really super close.
No, I gave you everything, including 11 by 17 versions. Yeah, I apologize that we're not page numbers on this packet. And I believe there is a close-up view of the site plan in the packet, which has setbacks
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. President?
What was the situation on the retaining wall?
Can you get your mic, please?
What was the situation on the retaining wall?
If you look at, I apologize that there, we didn't have anything on screen, this drawing in your packet, there are two dark lines along the top. The top one is the property line, the bottom one is a retaining wall, and I pointed that out in red. So if the applicant were to shift the home further north to meet the 20-foot setback to the south, it would put the home much closer to that retaining wall. And apparently he does not wish to do that. But I did not discuss that with him, you are welcome to ask him why he doesn't wish to move the home further north, or how much closer he could move it. The staff report does note that in the surrounding neighborhood, they are entitled to 15-foot rear setbacks because of the age of the lot, so that would be more in character with the
Could we ask questions of the applicant?
We'll have them, once we've asked questions of staff, we'll move to the applicant. Thank you. Any other questions of city staff at this moment? Mr. Lassoff? Mr. Biaski?
None for me.
All right.
None for me.
All right. Thank you, Susan. With that, would the applicant wish to be heard and subject himself to a quizzing?
No problem. Damon Gubler, 301 Ridge Road. I can help you guys with the, first, I know you have a question about the retaining wall. The retaining walls are actually double stacked, because the lower lot and the upper lot, there's 36-foot in elevation difference. So it sounds like a big lot, but my driveway is quite an experience to get up, but at the same token, it's a beautiful view once up on the top lot. The situation with retaining walls is they're engineered, retaining walls of course, by Rimrock Engineering, and then the soils company has a reference of what they call an angle of repose of the closest to let you build a structure to it because of the load that transfers down. So that's why we are limited on how far we can push up towards that retaining wall, because ultimately the load of the house then transfers down to them walls. So distance-wise, I probably have maybe one, one and a half feet. There's a couple options where I could do, you know, see if we could get away with doing some pilings or different things to offset that. So that's all, that was your question, and then I have some other comments, but I just wanted to answer your question about that, and then you guys can fire away, and I'll...
Why don't you go ahead and provide your comments, your thoughts, and that may pose some additional questions.
So, these particular lots, and I'm going to say lots in plural, because they started out as two complete separate parcels when I bought them in 2016. They were not ever adjoined until 1978. The city sold that top lot and it was actually landlocked the whole time through its duration. So I purchased this with two parcel numbers, and then I came to the city because the unique shape of that upper lot, it was 90 feet wide by 305 long. So unless you had a big double wide to put up there, it was kind of a very unique-looking lot. To maximize, you know, an aesthetic house that didn't look like you're pulling up to a motel, drive-in motel, super skinny and long. So I petitioned under 170, what is it? Let me pull up here. Bill Number 1788 to purchase .3 additional acres from the city to help ease that constraint on the pinching of what it is. And so when we were setting up, the, and I'm going to say the word assumption, but it's also just the geographic of it, when that purchase happened, part of the requirement is the city made me merge all the lots together into one APN. So upon doing that, now my upper lot now has a frontage down at the bottom, even though when you look at it from the west side end is where you actually access the lot from, is from the west end. It's not the west side, not the north side, it's the west end of the lot you actually access the upper lot from. So with the lot being 135-wide total, but with the retaining walls, you lose setback because the lower retainer wall's on my property line, and then the next wall above it for the second retaining wall is five foot back, and then you have the setback off the top wall you can build from, you lose in essence 15 to 20 feet, depending on how tall the wall is at that point. So when we constructed the plans for the house, it was always, the way you enter the lot would be the access, you know, would be what I would say common sense is, the way you drive into a lot, even though the address is down here, but if you have to go up to another lot and drive up, and it's this wide and this long, and you have narrow offsets for your sides and long for your front and your back, you know, it makes when you drive into the lot, that's how you would access your lot front. And there's two lines, and I don't know the degree difference, between the line that's more on the west end versus the line that's on the south, what the difference in degrees are, but that's the way I always looked at the lot, was the back, and if you count, it's got 11 lot lines. And that would put it at the back. The impact for where we're asking for the variance is absolutely nothing but city property and dives off into a drainage, and then you got the, of course, the trail in the background. The only way that you guys had ever improvement is all the way up at the top, you'd have to put a road in at the bottom to get access for it, because it's landlocked as well. So that was, that's the gist of, that was there, it wasn't done as anything to try to pull, I mean, everything thus far, I have, you know, 150 yards of concrete poured and thousands of block laid, and I don't have non-compliance issues on any part with the building department as far as what I've constructed this far. We're excited to move here, we've been trying to, you know, getting excited to build our house, bring a family here, and more importantly, I mean, it will change, the house is, you know, 6,000 square foot, so the tax basis, I pay $700 a year for tax for the land, I think you guys would love to get a little more revenue than that off the land, but that's the crux. that's the, the crux of what, what, how and when, and then if you guys have additional questions, I'll be happy. And I actually have a full set, if you guys want to look at, of the overlay, because I know you're looking at the little drawings. That way, if you want to see the retaining walls, it's easier to see.
Uh, thank you for that. Um, does, do any of the commissioners have questions of the applicant? All right.
Commissioner Lassoff, I have a question for the applicant.
Very good.
Uh, Mr. Gubler, I, uh, I drove by your property, um, but I've also been looking at aerial photos, and I'm not a surveyor or anything, but between driving by and looking at the aerials, it appears that your driveway coming up off of Ridge Road doesn't encroach onto your neighbor at 303 Ridge, at least on a small portion. Is that something that is corrected, going to be corrected? Does your neighbor have an issue? Do you need an easement?
Yeah, so, uh, the Robinsons are the, my neighbors there.
Yeah.
We, we, we actually have given them a, uh, engineered drawing to basically trade corners with them. That way, it'd pull that corner away from their house, and they'd give me that top corner. Um, the Robinsons haven't decided which way they want to go. Either way, all I gotta do is rotate my road, and I'll push my road, you know, five feet to the, to the west, and I can clear that, it isn't an issue. Um, you know, I've been there since 2016 and, you know, see them all the time, so that's...
Okay.
But I, it is acknowledged that, yes, that road is an encroachment, it was that way from, from, from the go. Um, we acknowledge it, and he knows it, and so we have options, but if he chooses that he doesn't want to do that, absolutely, it'll be moved over, and there won't be any need for an encroachment or anything like that.
Okay. I was, uh, it doesn't relate to the actual setbacks of your house, but I did see that as a, uh, just an issue that, uh, was gonna come up. That's all.
All right, thank, thank you. Um, any other questions for the applicant? Um, I just have a couple of questions for clarification. Did you talk to the city about what the city considered north, south, or front and back?
Uh, there was conversations on it, and, you know, they did bring up the fact of angles, but then we looked at it, and it was just kinda, you know, how it sits. Uh, when I come in, for my building permit was the first time it was really evident that that was, they identified that line as the back versus the one that, you know, is, I don't know the degree difference if they're, how close they are between the two of them, that would ultimately be, when you drive in the lot, would be the back. But there wasn't a definitive answer given at that point, we just knew that what was considered front, and then also the, the pact is, part of it is, when we started the retaining walls and all that, um, I hadn't merged the, the properties together, so it wasn't even, I don't even, I don't know what the comment would be, because it didn't have an address for that parcel number. It only got the parcel number after we, uh, merged them together.
All right. So is there any way to avoid the need for variance? I'm looking at that kind of generalized...
Yeah.
...drawing, but it does have dimensions on it.
Yes.
And I would note that the southwest corner of the house appears to be closer to that back lot line than the, uh, southeast corner. Um, there, in other words, appears to be a bit of an angle there.
Yeah, they're, it's skewed, it's skewed to the front, that front retaining wall, they offset to the retaining wall.
So could the home be shifted slightly, or could other modifications be done to allow us to avoid the variance requirement?
I would have to ask, I'd have to go back to the engineering, both the soils and the wall, to understand how much I could encroach on that and what they would require me to do to shift that forward.
Oh, okay, and I was thinking just rotate it slightly, it looked like, but I guess that would have the effect of shifting it forward.
Yeah.
So it's, um... Well, um, all right. I think that is, is all I have for questions, no other questions. Um, let's open, uh, thank you very much, I appreciate.
Okay, if you got anything else, just, I'll be more than happy to answer, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll open the public comment period on this agenda item. If anyone would wish to be heard on this matter, please step forward, state your name. Seeing no, whoop. Bill Rackey. Looks like you all have plot plans in front of you, you're looking at the plot, you're looking at what he's wanting to build. It's hard for the public to give comment when we don't have anything on the screen to be provided with to look. I don't know why you can't put it on the screen for us to see it as well as what you're looking at, so it's hard to make public comments from the public when we don't know. Second off, I would think, I don't want to say I'd like to see this table, but it sure is hard for the public to make a decision when you don't see anything. And you're all looking at stuff, you're seeing it. Lady back there said she wasn't provided anything to put up on the screen. You've got two TVs, we could see people in one talking, there should be some access for us to see this as well.
Mr. Chairman.
A lot of people don't even know where Ridge Road is. You know, you ask half the people here, they don't even know where Ridge Road is. You, you know, we're just sitting here listening to something we don't understand. Thank you. Fair enough, appreciate that. Susan?
Mr. Chairman, um, first of all, I guess, one question would be, are there any members of the audience that were actually within 300 feet of, excuse me, within 500 feet of the property and, or 750 feet and got notice of this? Because this is on the lake side of town. Okay. Um, that being said, I do have one set of plans that can be passed around, or if you would like to put the meeting on pause for five minutes, I can send, um, a PDF over so that Holly could upload it to the screens. I apologize, it's my fault that I did not do that in advance.
I think in light of the question, let's take a five-minute break, or in light of the comment from Mr. Rackey, let's take a five-minute break and just, um...
These are all, all public, though, before we go on, right?
Pardon me?
These are put on the website, probably for meetings.
Yes, it's all public, and obviously, apparently, nobody who actually lives in the vicinity is present, but you would certainly want to find out if anybody would want to call in.
Right, right.
We could, um, maybe, if we don't have comments, share and put them out.
Right.
So we don't have to do, because I'd be willing to give up my larger copy if anybody in the public wanted access to it.
If there's any members of the public who'd like, you know, a set of plans, we can pass them around. Leave a couple for yourselves, in case you need it for your deliberations.
Thank you for that comment. All right, so... Yeah, let's do that. Um, we're gonna... Yeah, we're gonna take a, how about a three-minute break and allow folks to scan those drawings? And I would also say that if anyone in the virtual audience would like to make comments, um, your opportunity is rapidly approaching. Uh, well, thank you for your patience this evening. Um, let's go ahead and end, um, the recess, as it's been noted up here, and, uh, let's, um, return to the public comment period for this item. Again, remember, this is the variance request by, uh, the applicant. Um, if anyone would wish to be heard on this matter, please step forward to the microphone. Bill Rackey again. Now that I've had the opportunity to look at the information, I discovered that I built the house right below him, a three-story. So based upon what I see, and based upon where the variance he's asking it to be, which is not toward the Lakeview Drive, uh, which would encroach, looking down upon the house that I had built and his neighbor, but on the backside of it, where there's nothing, I'm in full agreement with what he's asking to do. Thank you for your comment. Um, anyone, does anyone else wish to be heard on this matter in the audience? Seeing none, let's move to the, uh, virtual audience. Will, um, anyone wishing to be heard on... Turn back to make sure I, on variance request number 22658, uh, proposed by Damon Gubler at 301 Ridge Road, please call in now. Uh, the number is 702-589-9629. And again, we'll, uh, pause for a moment to allow the, uh, system to catch up. Hearing no comments, I'm gonna close the public comment period on this item and move it back to the planning commission for deliberation and a motion. Comments, please?
I think that, you know, none of the neighbors have stepped up, that they're, they're going to be, feel like this is, um, gonna encroach on their property or anything else, I think, due to the non-conformity, or the non-conformant piece of property that we're dealing with, I, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't move forward.
Would anyone else wish to be heard, or have comments on this?
This is Commissioner Lassoff. I'm not sure how granting this setback would negatively affect any of the neighbors or the city as a whole. Um, I'd be in favor of granting the variance.
All right.
This is Commissioner Biaski. I also agree that there's enough extenuating circumstances, um, and it's actually the best, uh, approach, and so I would be in support of approving, conditionally approving.
All right. Well, I would possibly be the sole dissenting voice. I do not feel that the exceptional conditions warrant a, um, a variance. I think the applicant does have the opportunity to make changes, but, um, do we have a motion? Mr. De, De Teresa?
Um, yeah, I'm fine with, with this, um, because of the irregular shape of the lot and the topography, and, um, I move to conditionally approve V-22-658 based on the findings on page four of the staff report and subject to the condition on page four.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed. Me. Nay. Thank you. All right, the motion passes. Very good. That brings us to agenda item number four, and this is amendment to the 2022 Land Management Process List. Um, includes resolution 1214, City of Boulder City, and this is a public hearing and recommendation to the city council on an amendment to the land management process list for 2022, uh, for two additional proposals. Um, rather than having me read them off, I suspect that city staff has that well in hand.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, Michael Mays, Director of Community Development. Boulder City is unique. You, I don't have to tell anybody that, um, the fact that majority of the land within our jurisdiction is owned by the city is the result of the creation of the land management process approximately 20 years ago. This process allows, um, the community and the planning commission to weigh in very early on in the process for the potential lease and/or sale of city-owned properties. Just to, um, help, uh, provide background information for you on this process, you have on the screen, um, a matrix which shows all of the current properties that are contained on the land management process list. So over the years, um, planning commission has weighed in, provide a recommendation to the city council, and the city council has made a determination, should we add these properties to this list or not? This list is in your packet, the list is also contained on the, uh, city's website. There's also corresponding maps that show the location of the current properties that are on this list. You can see the Townsite map on the screen, also in your packet, as well as the El Dorado Valley map. And so again, the purpose of the land management process list is to keep the community informed that the city may consider the sale and/or lease of city-owned properties at these locations. This is the very initial step, preliminary step. Um, adding a property to the list does not mean the property is going to be sold and/or leased. Um, that is subject to other approvals. Uh, adding the property to the list also does not mean that the, um, development would occur or they would receive the appropriate entitlements, um, because, uh, in many cases, uh, the additional steps that would be involved would be to consider amendments to the master plan, um, potential rezoning of these properties, and then ultimately, the negotiation for the lease of the property, which is, um, subject to city council approval, or in the case, with the sale of land, subject to the voters. The people vote on, um, whether, um, property can be sold, city-owned properties can be sold. And so with that background, I did want to provide a brief overview on each of the proposals that are before you this evening. Um, the first one, we were referring to as LMP number 2203. Um, this 74 acres, which is on the screen and also in your packet, is located west of the intersection of Adams Boulevard and Veterans Memorial Drive. Top Dollar Entertainment LLC, or what we're referring to as Elite RV, has submitted an application for the city to consider the potential lease of this land, which, as you can see from the map, is, um, on the boundary of Boulder Creek Golf Course. It's two separate parcels of city-owned property, and it's also directly north of our airport, uh, which is shown in the orange... which is shown in the orange hatch on the screen. Elite RV is proposing a luxury RV resort park that would include RV lots and cabins that would be rented to people that were coming to visit Boulder City. Gary Baldwin and Frank Manzullo are here to give a much more detailed presentation to you on this, and that will occur after my presentation. But I also wanted to bring to the planning commission's attention that when the city council recommended that this application advance forward for planning commission consideration, that the city council was also interested in information on a couple of other issues related to this project. That includes feedback from the Parks and Recreation Commission on the potential impact of this development on Boulder Creek Golf Course. So in your packet, I've included the minutes from the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, also their results from that. In addition to that, the city council was interested in finding out, is the infrastructure that is existing along Veterans Memorial Parkway, which is what would serve this development, will it, will this, will that infrastructure support this development? Will this development put additional burdens on city's resources, require upsizing of utilities, water, sewer demands? And so in response to that, we provided in the staff report the analysis of Public Works and the utility department's review of the potential impact. The summary result is, is that the infrastructure in place can accommodate this development, and it would not put a burden on our resources for this development. I also have Joe Stuvitz, our utilities director here, to answer any more detailed questions with regard to that from the planning commission members. In addition to that, I'd like to just go on and highlight the next project and then suggest that you entertain the presentation by Elite RV, and then staff can answer questions on both proposals. Then you would hold the public hearing and get public feedback on the proposals, then your deliberation, and then ultimately, your recommendation on both of these applications for consideration to be added to the land management process list. So moving on to the second proposal. This is what we refer to as LMP number 2204. This is 16.3 acres located southeast of Boulder City Parkway and Veterans Memorial Drive. The reason that this is being considered as an addition to the land management process list is it is staff and city-driven. For years, citizens in Boulder City have been asking for a second grocery store in the community, and staff has worked to try to attract a second grocery store, has had interested parties willing to look at Boulder City for a grocery store. The challenge has been finding a location. Staff has tried to work with private property owners, particularly along Boulder City Parkway, to identify potential locations for a grocery store, and has been unsuccessful. And so as a result, city staff evaluated city-owned lands for the potential of providing for a second grocery store and associated retail uses. This parcel is what was identified. And so you have the information in your packet regarding this parcel as well, and staff can answer any questions. So Chair, it's at your discretion. We can take these separately, or I could answer questions on both the applications, and then I could turn it over to Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Manzullo for their presentation on
Rather than having you come up twice to talk about these, let's at least pose questions to you on both the applications or both the, both items, and then, as you point out, let's let Elite RV come up after that. I'm just going to start out a quick question on LMP 22-04, that would be the grocery store property. Is it the city's intent that this be a sale of property, that it would ultimately be a sale of property if we found an interested buyer or a lease?
The initial direction would be for sale, and that would be a ballot question that would go before the voters in November, but it doesn't preclude the option for a lease.
Gotcha.
Regardless, it needs to go through this process.
Okay. With regard to location, you know, I would note that this is at the far extreme, the extreme west end of the community, and could you just address for all of our benefit, maybe some of the other areas that were looked at and perhaps why they may not have been ultimately selected? You know, one that comes to mind might be in the area just west of Buchanan, north of Adams. There's that strip of land that's currently vacant, which seems I could be more in the center of town, closer to residents.
And that's a, that's a very good question. So in working with commercial developers for the last 25 years and in consultation with our economic development coordinator, talking to potential grocery store developers and counterparts in the economic development field, one of the driving factors for any interest in a location is traffic counts. Grocery store wants to be where there's going to be a lot of traffic. And the only arterial within Boulder City that would have any levels of average daily traffic counts that would meet their criteria is Boulder City Parkway. So unfortunately, there may be other vacant city parcels within the community that are closer to our residential area, but the traffic on the adjoining streets is not sufficient to draw interest from grocery stores or developers of grocery stores.
All right, thank you. I'm trying to formulate a question. I'm not even sure it's an appropriate question, but would this be, should this be viewed by citizens as an kind of step one of a western, westerly expansion of town?
Certainly, one of the goals within the city's master plan and overall objectives for reasonable growth is you look at growth where the existing infrastructure exists. And in this case, the infrastructure is in place that would support this development. It doesn't require extending infrastructure into areas that are undeveloped. And so ultimately, it's the question of if this community is interested in looking at having a second grocery store with associated retail, and this is a spot that does not require additional infrastructure to support it, that's the consideration for the planning commission as to the appropriateness of adding it to the land management process list.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Yeah, the sole purpose we keep on bringing up grocery store is that, is it the need or want for another grocery store because we only have one in town, but I mean, we do have facilities for two, but.
Facilities.
Is it for competition, or is it because we don't have enough, enough grocery stores in town?
It's in response to what residents have been asking for, for several years, having additional options for grocery stores in the community. So right now, there is only one grocery store, and our efforts to try to attract a second grocery store to private property have been unsuccessful because the property owners have been unwilling to consider that as an option.
So does the Vons, is that owned by Albertson's company?
The Vons property is owned by Safeway, the parent company of Albertson's.
So actually, I might have to recruit, take myself out of the vote because I work for Service Capital, and we own Albertson's and Vons and Safeway, so I'm probably going to have to recruit, recruit myself from that.
Well, I think there's no direct pecuniary interest on your part to evaluate this proposal because of that relationship.
Okay.
Any other questions of staff on either of the issues?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have some questions for Michael.
Very good.
There's a utility easement that's running across that, the property, correct?
That's the overhead utilities, correct.
And is that the same easement that's running across the other land, the RV park?
It is directly south of the other proposal.
Okay.
And development cannot occur under that utility easement, which is part of the reason for the size of this parcel, is because it's acknowledging that no development can occur under that utility easement. This parcel, if we can go back to the screen, so you can see that, that teal color is the utility easement that traverses a portion of this 16.3 acres. That would not be developed. You also see that there's a stub at the north end, that's to provide direct access to Boulder City Parkway, which, based on feedback from developers, would be important for the viability of this site being developed for grocery store and associated retail uses.
Where that diagonal line goes across, where all that parking is, is that city-owned property too, or why would, why would that be excluded? Wouldn't they just do the whole corner?
That is private property. And so that, that's one of the places that we were trying to promote for a grocery store
I have another question. The ballot question is specific to a grocery store, is that correct?
That is correct, and associated retail uses.
Any other questions by the planning commission of staff at this moment? Mr. D. Teresa.
So I'm assuming that besides the supermarket grocery store, that there will be, that would act as your anchor tenant, and there would be other stores in that shopping center?
Correct.
Is that the goal?
Correct, yeah.
And when you speak of the utilities already there, you're talking about power, water, underground utilities?
Correct, adjacent, both in Boulder City, Boulder City Parkway, as well as Veterans Memorial.
Okay. And I, I do have a question about the RV resort, but that can wait until, until it's their turn. Thank you.
Well, all right, maybe that's the approach we'll take. Let's let Elite RV provide their overview, and Mr. Mays, if we could probably have you up afterwards again. Thank you very much.
Certainly. So again, it's Gary Baldwin and Frank Manzullo.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As stated, I'm Gary Baldwin. I'm the founder and CEO of the Elite Resorts. I'd like to mention too that I'm a 21-year resident of Boulder City, which, being a 21-year resident of Boulder City, may be very sensitive about weaving this resort into the community and preserving the small-town effect. And so we were very sensitive about that, and I'm sure you can appreciate that. To begin with, I just want to thank for your time, Mr. Chairman, and the members' time. And we went through the Parks and Rec. I want to thank Michael, the city, Michael here, and the city manager, the mayor. It's been kind of a laborious task getting through the hoops, but I have to say, everybody's been extremely professional, and we totally appreciate that. So a big thanks before I begin the, with the presentation. What you're going to see is, this is like version 5.0. The reason I beat, I bring that up is the fact that we have listened to the citizenry. We've listened to the mayor, the city council, city manager, et cetera, et cetera. And so we just, we didn't take it as lip service, we took it to heart. So if something was said by a council member, the mayor, or someone else and staff that brought up a critical, important part, we changed it, thus version 5.0. So I, once again, I just like to say that. So I believe if I can get some technical help here, okay, thank you, concerning the presentation. Let's go to, okay, can I just? Okay. Oh, I've got it, thank you. Okay. The thing is that, that we really, our call is, it's not really an RV park, it's an RV resort, and it even expands because as Mr. Manzullo will touch upon, the actual design of the cabin-type situation, I want to emphasize, this is a resort, it's very high-end. We're raising the bar, so it's not per se a park, it is, it is a resort. And the idea of the resort is to bring people to town and to entertain them while, while we're here. So once again, we want to attract visitors to Boulder City. Once again, we wanted a balance of the property not being too big or too small. You can see the list of activities, and when we started out and we're listing activities as far as for Boulder City is concerned, we're amazed at all the wonderful things that Boulder City has to offer. And once again, it is the tours at the dam, lake mead, it's the historical society, it's hiking, biking, motorsports, and the outdoor adventure, of course, the golfing. And the golfing really puts the icing on the cake for us, because when we were talking to the, the Parks and Rec, and Andy and your manager at the thing, and we basically, early on, went to him and said, what do you think about the idea, the concept? And they were thrilled about, about it, because they said they do get a lot of requests for people that want to come from out of town and play golf, but would like to stay here in Boulder City. And we felt this is an ideal opportunity, and there is a slide which Frank will take, will show you about the fact that the potential of increasing those revenues at the, at the golf thing. And really, we look at that development as an absolute team relationship with our company and Boulder City and the whole gamut of basically, from, from the vendors and the businesses to interaction with the, with the community as well. So we were really, really surprised about all the wonderful opportunities. As far as the innovator in the facility of Boulder City, development goals, we wanted to do a land lease to generate an ongoing cash flow for the city. We will build a beautiful facility. I can, I can, I can rest assured that, that this is a major capital investment, probably, probably one of the largest capital investments Boulder City has seen in the last 20 to 25 years. It's a major capital investment for us. We want to help, we're not going to get in the pizza business, we're not going to get in the, in the bar business or the coffee business, so what we do is make this as a, as a business hub that we can, when people come in, we can. So what we do is make this as a, as a business hub that we can, when people come in, we can pass them out into the community, into the vendors, et cetera, et cetera, to go get, go enjoy one of our wonderful restaurants, a pizza place, et cetera, et cetera. So, like I say, we're not, we're not per se into the, into the coffee or the, or the pizza business. We want that to, that revenues to be created within the community. We have really attentively listened to the Boulder City residents. We were very sensitive about the sustainability, the green of this situation. We're doing a lot of homework regarding solar, making this a, once again, a really energy-free type green facility that's almost independent on its own. The water and the electricity, very sensitive about the integration of the landscape and the view shed. Early on, we had some other properties and we felt that it would impact a view shed for residents and we said, no, we don't want to do that. So we've kind of, just kind of maneuvered our way around to a situation and a property that we do feel will not obstruct anybody's view whatsoever. And then once again, we're here as far as following the land management process and I'm going to introduce Frank to come up and finish off the presentation. But once again, I truly appreciate all the attentiveness. The questions have been invaluable for us. I feel like Boulder City has helped us design, which we will have, a world-class RV resort here in the community. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Frank?
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Chair, members, I appreciate the opportunity that we have to present this to you. I stole it, you know what I mean? Where's the, where's the, where's the terminal here? So the property here, we've already seen as Michael laid out, actually sits within the confines of the golf course. The, the center area there is just over 20 acres and that was what originally 20-plus years ago plotted to be, I believe, a nine-hole pitch and putt golf course that never, that never came to be. And then the surrounding area on the west there, obviously, we're taking into account that easement from those power lines as well. So to back up the map just a bit here, we can see where it's located. And just as the grocery store is concerned, we like that high traffic, but we want to be a bit off it because when people come, we want them to be able to actually enjoy themselves, appreciate the scenery here, and the vista there is beautiful, absolutely. So this is an overview of the resort site plan. So due to the nature of where we are and the relationship with the airport there, it is split into two sections, but that, that actually works to our advantage for a number of reasons from a design standpoint. It's real high level. What's on the screen there are 293 lots that include 60 which just have what we call park model cabins. Those are in the 300 to 400 square foot range. So if somebody has, doesn't have an RV, but they want to come to town and spend the weekend here, we have a place for them to stay. It's a place, very nice, very upscale. So just to zoom in just a bit, it also includes an 8,000-square-foot clubhouse that has a business center. We know that people in RVs do a lot of business, a lot of business owners that live in their RVs and operate out of them. There's also looking at a car rental. We know that there's a need for not only the, the folks that will stay with us, but also there is not currently a car rental center in the city. So we'd like to provide that amenity as well. Then inside the clubhouse, you have a, a nice infinity pool, a place to get a glass of iced tea after a day out of the golf course and just relax and enjoy the views. You can also see on the southeast side there, access to Boulder Creek Golf Club, which we have been talking with Parks and Rec about some things there. And again, this is, this is very early planning stages. Once we get through the process and we're at the next couple of stages, we will be employing golf course architect, master planning will come into play and all those conversations will happen. So just wanted to reiterate that this is, this is really a resort. It's something that's definitely higher-end. The current RV rates are in the mid-40s, about 45, 42, $40 a night, $42 to $45 a night across the US. And our average rate is going to be more than double that. So we are definitely going for the upper echelon, the higher end. But we know that with the growth of the RV industry in the last 20 years, with the number of baby boomers that are out there on the roads, this, this makes a lot of sense. The proximity to Las Vegas makes a lot of sense. The proximity to Southern California and travelers from there make a lot of sense. And we have a couple of, a couple of very high-end resorts that are in Southern California that we're using as a, as a bit of a model to prove out the concept and they've done extremely well. So, this would be a, a RV lot that would include your RV space as well as a build-out that would be like one of the small cabins, so kind of a combined scenario. Something, as you can see here, we're talking native species, no grass on the property, nice shade trees, keeping it native and just providing a, a place, sort of an oasis in the desert, but not something that sticks out, that's ostentatious, but also blends in so you can really appreciate what's around us. Here's another, another alternative, and this would have a, an outdoor kitchen build-out, so you can have some fun outside with the, with the neighbors. The luxury park model cabins, this is just one concept of what we could do here, but there's something that's small, 300 to 400 square foot. It could be, depending on how the, how the, the code actually is being written, will determine the, all the specifics about this. Is it temporary, is it permanent, is it fixed, is it not fixed? Those types of questions. We'll have to work through it because this is a, a very new thing, these types of small structures, just in the, in the, the world today. So again, on the inside, something with a nice, a nice tone to it. This is definitely not a, a hotel room or a budget tell. This is a, this is a little higher-end accommodations. Someplace where you wouldn't mind spending the weekend if you're down from Las Vegas or from out of town and spend some time here. And again, just a, again, a high-end resort feel is what we're looking for. Some of the, those amenities could include dog grooming, salon, nails, those types of things, those types of amenities that there are a number of people out there that are looking for this. And just a little background, Gary has extensive experience in the hotel hospitality industry and my background is in engineering. And when the two of us came together and we're looking at projects, it made a lot of sense because we can take what we believe is an awesome industry, the RV industry, but just raise the level, raise the game and really make it the, the city on the hill. So there's some resort policies that we took into consideration here specifically dealing with Boulder City and the experience of RV resorts or RV parks in the city. So this resort would have a minimum RV size and a maximum RV age. If somebody is pulling up in a quarter-million-dollar rig, they don't necessarily want to be next to a 30-year-old pop-up. So it's our job to, to regulate that. Having a maximum length of stay and no permanent stays. This is a lease, so, from the city, we don't own the land, we cannot sell it as condos. We're also very sensitive to some of the situations that have happened and want to work with the city to write the rules and enforce the rules so that we don't have situations that we don't want. We also want it to be good neighbors and reach out to the community. So there's a couple of things that we've included here. One is to actually have a tourism hub that's on property. So that's, imagine if you take the, everything that is in the community, from kayak and bike rentals to tours of the dam, to golfing, to you name it, arts festivals, things like that, and actually bring them into one place so that we can be really a concierge for those, those people that are coming to town, as well as giving some visibility, some visibility there with the location. Additionally, we want to put those, those amenities on our website so that when people are coming, we can actually market to them and market the local businesses. So when I'm at the Chamber of Commerce and I see those hundreds of pamphlets, each of those pamphlets represents a small business here in the area that we can promote. One of the things here where we obviously care about is water usage. So, looking at what we're, we're actually proposing with 293 total sites, an average of 100 gallons a day, and work through the numbers with the, with the little commercial space there, we're looking at about 11 million gallons a year. And that sounds a lot if I had to fill my bathtub, but when I look at the, the 2019 Boulder City usage, that's just under 3 billion gallons. So the increase in water usage is less than a half a percent. And I know that we'll be discussing that in, in depth here in a moment with the engineer. Just to compare, if we were to take that land and do something else with it from a development standpoint, we're about half the usage of the average Boulder City home and we're about two-thirds of the average hotel room. And then factor in the fact that we'll be running, if we run at two-thirds occupancy, then that'll actually drop that number from 100 down to 67. We're using considerably less water than, than many other uses for that land. Electricity, we'll tap into the existing infrastructure, but as Gary mentioned, we're all, we are also very actively looking at, at solar panels to, in a couple of different scenarios. Not prepared to talk about that today, but that's something that's very keen interest and near dear to us. And the usage on electricity is also similar to the water picture. We're about half of what the average Nevada home would use on a daily basis. The view shed, caring for where this is located is key because we wanted to make sure that no matter where you are, we're not going to obstruct anybody's view. We want to capture those views that we have, but at the same time, not impede anybody else. So we looked at a couple of, at a couple of intersection locations here, and what that green is, is if you were standing at a location of that yellow pin on top and look out, the green is anything that you would see today and the grayed-out area is anything that you, that would be obstructed. So what we noticed was that we're actually on top of a turtle's hill, on top of a turtle's back there on that hill. And it actually works out wonderfully because from I-11, you still have the back, you have still the backdrop of the, of the mountains and it blends into the, into the cityscape or, excuse me, into the landscape. And also on I-93, it sits down low enough, that entire lot slopes downward about 4%. So we're, we sit far enough back off of that, that you look right over the top of the resort and the, the two-story building restriction just works to our advantage again. And finally, to our, our neighbors to the north there with the veterans homes, we wanted to do something to reach out and it's something that's very near and dear to Gary and my heart, is reaching out to our veterans. And we know that just one small way we can do that is they have a program throughout Southern Nevada at those homes called Send a Smile to the Vets. And that's something where they have screens like these in the homes where people can make signs and hold things up. People will email those in and they'll put them on and post them continuously. That's something that we can take and digitize so that if somebody wants to make a sign with a photo booth at our property and put it in that loop and just say, hey, we love you as a neighbor, we love what you did, thank you, we can do that. Additionally, we know that we have families that come to want to visit their, their friends or their, their relatives at the home there, will now, will have a place to stay that's very close across the street. And obviously, we want to work with that community for discount programs, things like that. So to take a look at what actually is, the, the land looks like currently, the parcels that we're looking at there, the most important thing is that everything here is city-owned. No, this is privately owned, so it's like to say, one throat to choke. We appreciate the fact that everything's together and it's also a very unique and wonderful situation because we only have to go to, to one meeting rather than going to a landowners' meeting and a, and planning meeting and, 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 so we appreciate that. Here's the overlay with those, with those acreages marked out. Important to talk about the economic, economic impact of this. Obviously, as it's being constructed, there's going to be construction jobs there, but also it's going to actually produce rental income for the city. And we know that the majority, the huge majority of that right now is from energy leases. So it's an opportunity for the city to, to, to diversify that income and actually start to generate income from a different source. Additionally, as we do that, that is going to stimulate business in town because restaurants may need RV repair, RV wash, other businesses that are, that are associated with this, obviously in addition to all the tourism opportunities, restaurant opportunities, historic opportunities that we have right here. The fact of the matter is, we have 42 million people a year that visit Las Vegas, we have 8 million people a year that visit the dam and the Lake Mead Rec area, and we're right in between and let's give them something, a reason to stop. And we think we can do that. And then on the, the side of the job creation, as we develop this, it's actually a shade over 34 full-time jobs right now that we'd be looking to do, but we think that we can also cultivate some, some new businesses too. We'll need hairstylists that we want to employ, we, we may need dog groomers, things like that, that we want to employ. There's any number of ancillary businesses that could support this business and we'd love to see those local. We'd also see, like, like to see the employees there local because if I'm in a resort facility and I have a question, I'm from out of town and I want to know, where can I get a craft brew or where's the best pizza in town or is there any live music going on this weekend? And I have somebody there that can ask, that's what I want as a resort owner. I want my employees to be able to speak about their surroundings and educate people and just let that sink in and let the folks that come here enjoy it and know that they want to come back and tell their friends about it. The next, impact on golf, because this is a big subject for, for the resort, but also for the city. We're actually in a position there because we can now, we have a place for people to stay. So when Andy at the golf course gets a call and, and says, hey, I got five, five foursomes coming up from Arizona, do you have a place for us to stay? Want to come up for the weekend? Well, right now, the answer is maybe, but we want the answer to be, oh yeah, we got it right here, let's, let's book it right now. We want to do that. Obviously, bringing folks and marketing that golf tourism is going to bring in revenue from a number of sources, the green fees, merchandise, F and B, but it also opens up for destination weddings now because now we have a place for people to stay. We have the beautiful facility there at the, at the golf club right now, a massive tent that holds hundreds of people that we could use and, and really help each other in this scenario. Destination golf events, there's also going to be spillover for the municipal course and raise the, raise the green fees that are collected there. And when we're going through, we can come up with our best-laid plans, but ultimately it comes down to the constituency and we want to be a good neighbor and want to take into account everything that we can from them. And fortunately for us, a couple of years ago, there was a strategic plan in 2018 and the committee, the community was surveyed and 16 comments were made about tourism and 16 of the 16 were pro-tourism. So just to read a few of these, encourage overnight stays, encourage recreational opportunities, make it attractive, visible from I-11 you can see while driving past Boulder City. We need RV resorts. Maintain small-town atmosphere while appealing to visitors and tourists. And a theme came out of that, that the folks here locally, they want growth, but they want to drive it with tourism. They, not through tract housing or other means, but through tourism. And that is it. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to our architect, Tyler, and if you would. We'll also be available for questions shortly.
Thank you. Hello, good evening. Pleasure to be here. I've had the opportunity to work with Gary and Frank, our, our company has, on a couple of previous projects and just thrilled to be a part of this one as well. So, when we started into, into the design of this project, I said it's important for us to understand and know what, what utilities and what design would need to be incorporated for, for our own use, but more importantly, it would be, we need to pass that along to you and as a commission, city council, and to the residents of Boulder City so that we can, we can make sure that we're incorporating your concerns and that we can show and, and make sure that this development does not have any adverse effects on, on the existing infrastructure here, here in the city. So, throughout the presentation, Mr. Mays, Gary and Frank have done a great job of already articulating some of the research we've done with the water usage, with the slide we've shown about the relatively minimal impact of the water usage that needs to go on there and, and the power as well. So, in addition to that, we started doing some, some research on some of the sewer demands as well and what the requirements there would be, and that has come up in previous, some previous meetings. Mr. Stupitz, who's here tonight, was actually very gracious in, in helping us with some of that information as well. There was a recent model done here in the city that he could probably shed some more specific details on, but I wanted to highlight a few of those items. First of all, the design will be tying into the existing gravity system here for the city. And what Mr. Stupitz was able to do was incorporate the development of our proposed RV park into the existing Boulder City citywide gravity system. And in, in doing so, looking at some of what the discharges would be for an RV park, it would be 99 gallons a day per stall. And then for the commercial, it would be 1,320 gallons per day for that one acre of the commercial. So when those were tied into his model, not to get too far into the, into the weeds and details here, but the conclusion was that the additional demand from the proposed RV park will not have an effect on the operating conditions within the sewer distribution system. The flows would not significantly increase the capacity and velocity constraints of the system during the average peak or dry weather flow conditions. And based on that, it is not recommended any sewer distribution system upgrades need to be required at this time. So again, we're able to, with the, you know, the impact of this project, we're able to increase traffic, increase visibility, increase tourism with relatively minor impact to the existing infrastructure here at Boulder City. So, like I said, as we move forward in this process, we'll be able to provide more specific information about the design and the layout as Frank had just mentioned. information about the design and the layout, as Frank had just mentioned. But with that, we can, like I said, stick around, help answer any questions you have, or if there's any other further information from you guys. With that, we can turn it over for some questions.
Very good, and we appreciate the overviews, and yeah, I'm going to turn it back to the planning commission for questions of the, I'm going to call you the applicant at this point, but we'll say Elite RV, how about that? Beth?
Thank you. During the Parks and Rec Commission meeting, there were 10 items to consider, the recommendation, and several questions that were asked and not answered at that time, and I'm wondering if you could elaborate on the questions that you didn't have answers for at that meeting, and anything on the 10 items that you'd like to add to our consideration in the matter?
Absolutely, thank you. And please do keep in mind that this is a preliminary design, some very important key issues that plug into that, but many of these will be handled when it's completely architected out, we're just not at that position yet. That said, a few of the questions here, there's a question about access to the golf course, transportation of patrons from RV resort to the course, that could be limited by technology. I know the carts that are out there currently have a technology on them, where if you drive off the course, it actually kills the motor on the golf cart. We'd use something like that on our side, because we'd have carts available for rent, but we could have that same exact technology, so that you can only go so far, and then a warning comes on, and then the motor turns back on, and if you continue, then it's going to lock up, it's going to really lock up. So we can, through technology, do that. Some of the questions were on water usage, which we just covered. The number of lots and the size of lots, specifically around the course, that's related to the question about tranquility, really a question about setbacks, and that was really a major question at the last meeting. So what I did was to look at what the current setbacks are on the municipal course, and we found that those are in the range of 80 to 160 feet from the center line of the fairway to property lines. And the design as it stands today, the setbacks on our development are between 80 and 250 feet. That's important for a couple of reasons, obviously the tranquility and the beauty, also because we don't want golf balls going through people's windows, or anywhere else that they shouldn't go. But I thought that was interesting, that there is some precedent here in town that we could draw from. The next question was specifically about security on the golf course, and that's something that we'd like to defer to a later design phase, when we hire our security firm to actually come in and develop that out. But what we'll say is that we obviously want to work in conjunction with the golf club to make sure that rules are met, to make sure that people are not going on the course where they shouldn't, or walking dogs on the course, things like that. We'll have signs posted. Additionally, when people come to, just like you would go to a hotel, whether you realize it or not, when we check into a room, we're signing a contract that says we are going to adhere to these rules, that's something that we'll have on our website, so that there will be rules that pop up before you make your payment, I agree to adhere to these rules, check here, that sort of thing, so that we can, we have just another level of keeping an eye on our property and the community's property.
Excuse me, Frank? I just want to add one thing, coming out of the hotel casino business, we'll have a director of security, which will interact with the local PD here, I can assure you that it'll be well-lit, well-secured, that's a lot of my background, so you know, it's paramount, we want our guests to be safe, we want a wonderful experience for everybody, we know there's a little turmoil in the world, et cetera, et cetera, so we want people to be safe and sound, and enjoy themselves, and totally relaxed. But once again, I have a lot of expertise in that area, and I can assure you, we'll have a 24-hour, 7-day-a-week camera system being monitored 24/7, and patrolling security. Thank you.
More?
Yeah, I think that covered most of what was covered at the Parks and Rec meeting, was there something specific that you had a question on?
There are a couple items. The last two bullet items in that, the meeting minutes relating to the golf professionals concerned on the project, you addressed the security. In terms of the impact, local golfers and the project as a whole, you mentioned earlier that you had used some case studies, or looked at some case studies around the country, and I really didn't hear too much on that. What, out of those case studies, where were they, and was it a similar environment to our community size? I think maybe the first gentleman mentioned case studies, the concept studies.
Oh, the concept studies, oh, yes.
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, there are a number of these, I'll say a small number, when you're talking about the highest tier, it's less than 100 throughout the US, out of 10,000-plus RV parks and campgrounds. One is in Indio, California, another one is in Palm Springs, California, and the remainder of them are in Florida and South Carolina. The two in Southern California, I'll just say briefly, they do extremely well, and the occupancy is incredible. Also here locally, we have, the closest one locally would be the Las Vegas Motor Coach Resort, which is in Las Vegas, off of Blue Diamond, just north of Blue Diamond, by the 15, and it's well-hidden, it's a little gem, but it's another beautiful RV resort. It's not, the oasis is a large one, it's just to the west of that, just north of Target, I think it's on Arville and Blue Diamond. And we have the ability to look and see what, look and see how they're doing, and their success rate, and it's something for us to model, and that we want to eclipse.
I have one more, and that's stopped, I promise. Looking through the notes, there was something about the lease, having a 30-year lease, additional 30 years, 30 years, so potential of 90 years, I'm assuming that has something to do with the large capital investment. For the financial model for this, what is the return on the investment in terms of number of years that would be the minimum lease amount that you would consider for the project?
Sorry, I heard someone, that's what was on the table with, that's TBD, that's what was on the table with the city attorney in our first meeting there.
So there's no answer to that?
Not at this time.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you. I'm going to jump in with a couple. So I'm going back to, second to the last bullet, and let me just read it off, because I'm sure there must be some novel way to address this, but one of the concerns had to do with the impact of local golfers, access to tee times, in other words, the competition between this new group of potential users and existing users. How does that get addressed in these environments?
Well, as a business owner, it's my job to get that revenue as high as possible. So to me, it's a bit of an odd duck question, but I do come from Rockford, Illinois originally, which is a very strong Parks and Rec Park District type of town that had public golf courses, and I played a lot on them, I played a whole lot on them. And we used to say that a park district that ran golf courses, if you golfed, it was the greatest deal in the world, and if you didn't golf, it was the worst deal in the world. So it really comes down to doing what's best for the constituency, and that's a question really for Parks and Rec and for the city. That being said, there are ways that, there are ways that we can make people happy, I believe. If we, if the question is booking tee times from outside versus inside the city, there's ways, from a technology standpoint and managerial standpoint, that the golf course could set rounds aside, or have certain, you know, there's things that could be done to alleviate that without nixing a project, I believe.
Perfect, that's, kind of conceptually, that's about what you'd have to expect.
Mr. Chairman, I might just remind the commission that, in this case, the proponents have given you a ton of information, and obviously, a lot of that information is not germane to the planning commission's purview. Likewise, you may have a ton of curiosity questions, but as they've pointed out, the Parks and Rec Commission and other city departments and entities, in addition to the city council, will be diving deep into those aspects. The point of the land management process list recommendation by the planning commission is to evaluate this from a land use standpoint, is this an appropriate land use for the location that they're asking about? So just a reminder.
Right, no, I appreciate that, and we will bring it back to that. I think I've got a couple more questions, and I have some questions of Mr. Stubez, and I think those apply to any similar use of this property, which should help us to make that determination as to whether or not this sort of use is appropriate, recognizing that it may not be you, but this sort of application. So as far as RV parks of this nature, we're seeing quite a spike in fuel prices, obviously, we don't, you know, that has to factor into occupancy in this type of resort.
Absolutely.
What are you seeing, and what are you expecting?
Absolutely. We happen to be situated very fortuitously for that, because the city of Las Vegas is home to over 50,000 RVers. So when they need to go somewhere, when they want to go somewhere, don't want to spend a lot on gas, we have a place for them to come. Additionally, the resorts that we're looking at in Southern California, they're actually both condo lot-type scenarios, and they start at a quarter million dollars a lot, and go up in the million-dollar range. And they're home to RVs that are several hundred thousand dollars, and we believe that the price of gas is not going to affect that customer from driving up from Southern California, or Northern California, or other areas. So it is, it's a shot across the bow, because when I go to the stations and I see $5 and increasing gas prices, who knows what it's going to be a year from now, that's something that we take to heart, obviously, but we think that it'll actually work to our advantage in this scenario.
I have just a couple of questions for our city engineer, if he, if I could get him to step up, I'd appreciate that.
Joe Stubez, our utilities director?
Ah, sorry.
Good evening, Joe Stubez, utilities director, no worries, caught me off-guard there.
Yeah, I'll bet. So we've talked, or we've heard a little bit about water use being low relative to other potential uses of this property. We've heard the model indicates no significant impact, and I guess, and kind of the same for electrical use. Those are kind of generic terms, however, and what, how close are we coming to our capacity as far as sewer capacity, electrical capacity, and ultimately, our water resources, our entitlement for the city of Boulder City?
So for sewer, you know, as was explained, it's extremely low, so it's estimated residential units is the comparison to a single-family residential home, so it's a 60% factor for each slot, so the 293 units there, it's 60% of what that would be the equivalent of homes. It's only, just over 2% of the total usage of the city into the treatment facility, so that gives you kind of an idea in percentage for sewer. And then to go to water, there's raw, there's potable, all coming down that corridor, Veterans Memorial, there's 12-inch potable, and 18-inch raw, and 8-inch raw, that's all available there as far as allotment capacity. The estimates that the Elite RV presented is usage per day, and actually, per year, it was equivalent to 33 acre feet. So just to kind of get that in comparison to what the city's allotment is, it's 18,754 acre feet annually is our allotment. Understand the sensitivity regarding the drought that we've been in, compared to what would be similar uses in the area, it's very low. So and then as far as electric goes, we've got the capacity there, Substation 5, there's 500 MCM cable hookups running down the whole corridor of Veterans Memorial.
Very good, thank you. And then I'm not sure who to address this question of, the, is it the Airport Commission had concerns about proximity to the flight path for that north-south runway? And obviously, you've taken these into consideration, we see the separation of the two parcels. Do you feel, though, that that little bit of separation is still going to allow for, I mean, do you think that's gonna, that planes flying over, you know, a few hundred feet doesn't mean a lot for the level of noise coming from some of the turboprop airplanes? How, just help us understand how that factors into your considerations?
Yeah, it was with respect to the airport staff who would review this and had concerns. That's where Elite RV revised their proposal to respond to that, but there still exists the concern about the noise impact, and so it's been communicated to Elite RV that it's going to need to be very clear to the patrons of their resort, that planes will need to operate on that runway, and that may result in, you know, complaints, and so they need to make sure that their patrons are aware of that in advance.
Very good. Yes, and additionally, since last meeting, I have looked at the flight records, just to get a feel for the times that planes are going through there, and rough numbers, and to put concisely, it was not very scary, so. But when the time is right, I think we're going to, we're going to, if I have to sit out there in a lawn chair all day and get the feel for it, then we'll do that.
Fair enough, thank you. I think that addresses my questions, anyone else?
So I have a question, excuse me, so the only other RV park we have with, that's even close to that size, is Canyon Lakes, isn't it? How many, and how many, how many spaces is it, and how much of power consumption do they do during the summer?
Oh, I can't answer power questions. We have two RV parks in town, one rental and older, and then they, that one's called Canyon Trail, the other one's called Boulder Oaks, or Red Mountain RV, and they call themselves a resort because they have a clubhouse and a pool, but, and in that park, they own their own lots, but it wouldn't really be comparable to what this proposal is. Now Canyon Trail, I think that's, I can't recall if that's less than 100 spaces or more than 100 spaces, because they're all rental. In Boulder Oaks slash Red Mountain, I believe it's about 275 lots.
So when these are all, is it going to be any subdividing going on, and are these going to be considered lots, so that we would never fall into, like, you could do a single-family home?
As they've pointed out, they're strictly going to be asking for a lease from the city, and as their other slide pointed out, they're going to have, you know, definitely have limits on occupancy, and they're stating that they have no intent of violating our current code. Our current code technically does have a limit on occupancy, but unfortunately, due to the wording, there's a mighty big loophole that allows, you know, occupants to stay there nearly year-round, but the applicants are stating that they have no intent of doing that, and certainly, the city can limit that as part of the lease, it can be far more specific within the lease as to whatever occupancy limits they and, you know, the lessee might come to agreement on.
So all the financial stuff, like if they're getting a room tax, all that kind of stuff will all be through the city, the lease agreement? will all be through the city, the, the lease agreement?
They
And I, and I know that we can't really ask about financials, but...
Well, they obviously would have to adhere to all local regulations, taxes, and, and ordinances.
So, are the tiny homes, for say, the, the small, are they going to be as a room tax, like, like for a hotel or something because they're...
Yeah, it'd be considered like a, a hotel room.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is this also going to accommodate, I know that we're going to be mandated by the state to have so many tiny homes. Is this going to alleviate some of that because they're, they're going to be there?
I don't know if these would meet the definition of tiny homes. I believe the square footage of these cabins would be over 400 square feet.
Around the 400 square foot. And, and that's something that was still TBD as far as, this is all very new to, to everyone. But we're, we're here to, to work through that with you.
Yeah, I think the distinction here is a tiny home by definition is under 400 square feet. It's for permanent occupancy. This would be considered like a hotel room. It's not for permanent occupancy.
Correct, that's exactly as we view it.
I have a question, a couple of questions.
Mr. Mervin?
The maximum stay number is just a number that's not even been quantified yet, is that correct?
Correct.
But that is a, that's a germane thing regarding the whole, the whole layout of this. It's a, for example, in an RV park in, at least in Las Vegas, basically, all they have to do with their RVs is pull them ahead every six months, five feet, and then they can back up and, and that evades the stay. And I don't know where else that's done, but I'm just curious as to what the range of a maximum stay would really be.
That's something that we still have not, we have not had those discussions with the city to understand really what the, what the city wants. Because I understand that the situations that are, that evolved due to what's on the books and what's not on the books and those sorts of things. But I will say, this as a business operator in an RV park, the shorter the stay, the more people spend. Because somebody's going to stay for a month or two or however long, they're going to go to Walmart and they're going to buy their food there. They're not going to buy it at the, at the camp store. They're gonna, they're, they tend to do that. They're not going to go out to eat as much. It's just a natural thing because they're, they're in more of a, a permanent living type of mode rather than a vacation mode.
So, perhaps you're talking in, in a level of weeks or not too many months anyhow?
I, we have not, we have not got to that stage.
Right, and that has a big bearing on, on, on the whole lease relationship and how that shakes out. One other question, and that has to do with the reference to the California RV parks that were mentioned, but those are all property-owned parks, right?
They are.
So, that, that's not a, a very good analogy.
Well, they, how they operate, just like the, like Las Vegas, Las Vegas is roughly 400 lots, and roughly 300 of, 300 of those are condo lots, and they're considering to sell those off, and the remaining 100 are corporate-owned. But then what happens is those lots that are condo lots go into a pool to be rented. And then there's a revenue split with the owner and the operator in that scenario. So, they are still, they are still rented out on a regular basis.
Thank you.
I have one more question, I guess this is for council or for staff. Are there's going to be bonds put up, just like road bonds and everything else like any other construction project?
Are you referring to, file would be financed?
No, you'd like utility bonds and all that. So, if, if for something happens, they can't finish the project, there's, there's bonded bonds there to finish the project or to bring it back to the state it was?
Bonds are always required when there are improvements that are going to be turned over to the city to ensure completion of that. But when you have private development, there aren't necessarily bonds that the city is going to obligate to ensure that that project is complete. This would all be private, there would be no public streets at all, it would just all be private development.
So, let's say that the business, you know, we go into recession, can't finish it. Is there any assurances that we're going to put into the contract that the plan would be brought back to where it was? Or, you know, the city now inherits any improvements that have been done? So, and I know that's kind of getting into the weeds of the contract, but it's still, you know, would be a deciding factor to move forward.
Typically, with our leases, we put provisions within those leases that they would be obligated to return it if they do not complete the project, yes. So, that would be contained within the lease.
But if the company's gone out of business, how do you get them to do that if they're, is it, I mean, do, were we going to put up a bond like a, didn't we do that at the, on the solar plants where there's bonds to, to bring them back?
I'm not aware of any bonds that have been required with those leases. I mean, certainly, I can certainly check into that.
All right, I'm going to try and bring us back into the kind of the matter at hand. I, I know that I strayed as well. Our, our job up here tonight is really to identify whether or not we feel that the two proposed uses are compatible with these parcels of land, and not, as, as you say, get too much into the weeds. And so, I apologize for my part in that. Do we have any last questions before we open it up to public comment for city staff?
Mr. Chairman, are you intending to open up two public comment periods? Because so far, you've only had, well, you started a little discussion, the second proposal, and then went to the first proposal. So, are you going to?
The, it's agenda is one public comment period, so I think it can be handled under one public comment period.
And that was my intent. So, do we have any more questions of city staff? And without too much detail, this applicant. Mr. Biaski, Mr. Lassoff?
I don't have any questions at this point.
All right, thank you.
I don't have any questions right now.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We sure appreciate all your time here this evening.
Thank you, we appreciate it as well, and the opportunity here in Boulder City.
All right. So, with that, we move to the public comment period. And so, as Susan asked, and just for clarification, we're going to entertain comments on both items, both, all three parcels, if you will, the two that are proposed for a RV resort, and the parcel that's being proposed for a grocery and associated retail. If anyone has any, has comments on those items, please step forward to the microphone. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Gregory, and I wanted to comment on both projects. The one for the RV resort, it's a land lease. I think that would benefit the city, and I, in my view, it would only bring revenue into the city, and I, and I agree with it. I think it's a good project. The grocery store as a land sale, no. And the reason is, we have a Smith's that's 8.6 miles down the hill. It's very close. We have a Walmart that's 9.8 miles down the hill. We don't need another grocery store. There's too many negatives. Gingerwood Mobile Home Park's view, it's just going to obscure it. I personally don't want to look at the back of a grocery store or a retail center. It's just going to impact our values of our existing homes. So, I'm not in favor of it. I don't see the need for it. We have an Albertson's. There's a lot of negatives that can come with a grocery store. We all know what happens when you have food delivery. And the bonds that used to be there also have problems with rats. And we have rats already, we don't need anymore. And that comes with a grocery store. So, I feel like it's a negative impact. I think the city could make better use of the land in a land lease situation. And we haven't even begun to talk about what type of businesses are going to be also included in that property. So, for me, it's a no. The close, the Smith's is close enough, the Albertson's is there, and the Walmart. I don't think we need another grocery store. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The first comment I want to make is on the RV park and camp cabin rental. I would like to see the city, and this be passed on to the city, that if there is a lease, that it's done knowing that with inflation and the rates we have, and the possibility of it going higher, we don't do what we did to the solar plants and leases when they were first started and cap them at 2%. Obviously, we are losing money. That's the main concern I have on that. It's taken me years to find the answer to that, but I found it out from a city employee who had only been here for a few months. The second comment I would like to make is on the grocery store. I think possibly, we should go to Albertson's and try to get that property back somehow, some way that was at, say, the, the old Safeway Vons. I think it's an ideal location if another grocery store wants to come in. Right now, we have a monopoly right now in this town, and there's a lot of people that can't go to Henderson, don't have the capabilities, elderly and don't want to, or don't drive. I think we should ask Albertson's somehow if they're willing to sell that property. And if they're not willing to, possibly look into eminent domain and take that property. Because no, no company deserves to have a monopoly in the town. And I'm against eminent domain. There is no doubt about it. I'm, I'm against it 99% of the time. But if Albertson wants to hold that property simply to keep a monopoly in this town, I think we, the town itself needs to look at that a little closer and see what we can do. I know it's an, an ideal spot. I mean, that's why it was built there to begin with. And it's centrally located. It's not on the outskirts of town. So, I just think that still is the best place for a second store to come into, and that's my feelings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I live at Gingerwood. My name is Sandra Terbury, and I'd like to say I moved up here 11 years ago. I used to come here to visit a lot because I really liked, really liked Boulder City, and I decided, I'm going to move here. And I stayed at the Boulder condos and then bought into Gingerwood. And I don't want to have that store built next to Gingerwood or any retail stores with it. You know, you're taking away from some of the small people in the town that have had their hair, hairdressing shops, their nail jobs, just for these retail stores. And there's other shops in this town. You go over to Chili Jilly's, and they're trying to rent some of the shops in, in there that, that are for, for lease, for rent. And you're just not getting it. And I just know that this town, every year, I see it for the last three years, getting colder and colder. And you build that next to Gingerwood, I will move far away and never come back to this city again, and I mean it. This isn't a town. I was told when I moved here, the bylaws were it was never going to go over 15,000 residents. Well, that's way over that, you know that. It's what, 22, 23,000 now? Or 25? Who knows? What's it going to be? What's it going to be another two, three years from now? 35,000? I don't want to live in a town where there's, it's ridden with criminals and crime going on, and the police can't handle it, and that's what's going to happen. With us next door to a grocery store, we have a fence, they'll have a wall, but believe me, they can get over anything. And then we have to worry when we sleep at night. I'm already worried when I sleep at night because I've already been broken at four in the morning. When they broke into my house while I was sleeping in my bed and came right into my bedroom. So, I think, what's going to happen now? They're going to build that there, and then there's going to be a lot of that happening? No, I'm very angry, and I don't want that built there. Because don't tell me it's just a grocery store. It's not just a ready grocery store. It's 16 and a third acres of land, and there's going to be retail stores there too. No. I will move far away from Boulder City if that happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also live in Gingerwood. When my husband and I retired and downsized, and I don't know why all of a sudden I'm nervous, like half the people in the room I know. When we decided to downsize and move to Boulder City, we weren't sure where we wanted to go, what we wanted to do, how permanent we wanted it to be. So, Gingerwood was a perfect location for us to get our feet wet and see where we were. We have the ability to change locations. If a grocery store goes in, that's not where I want to live. But I have the ability to move. There's a lot of people who don't. I think after looking at the maps that were up and on the website, I would like you to reconsider and look at other areas within Boulder City. I love your idea about trying to approach Albertson's. It's already there. But I agree. I think it's going to bring vermin that we don't need and that people can't necessarily deal with. We're talking about a lot of elderly people who live in Gingerwood with the homestead gone, and we do have that apartment complex, but it doesn't offer those alternatives. So, I would like to see it stay as pristine as possible. I feel that, that the grocery store will bring an element to that area that doesn't necessarily be, that need to be there. We already have the bus stop close enough. We have other things that are near us. We don't need to attract more vagrants or more problems. So, I am opposed to that being leased as a grocery store. I'm opposed to selling it right now until there are other plans for that land usage. And I would really, really, really like to see you find another location if indeed we do need a grocery store. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience like to be heard on this matter?
My name is Jim Phipps. I live in Gingerwood, and I would really not like to see anything built in that area behind us. And there's a lot of reasons for that. Besides what's already been brought up, or including what's already been brought up, that's 16 acres that, that is pristine, it, it's a desert, it's, it's natural. If we develop that, then who knows what's going to be coming in there? There, there's already been mention of, of rats and all this kind of stuff. But there, there are other considerations that other retail facilities will go in there besides a grocery store. Well, there are empty buildings and offices by Chili Jilly's, and there's empty buildings and offices along that way that are just crying out for somebody to rent them and, and, and build some kind of a business in there. So, I don't think we need any more So I don't think we need any more openings or any more facilities over there. Let's use the facilities that we have. And another point for a grocery store is that it's away from 99.9% of the population in the city. And it's not really going to do any people or anybody that lives over by, say, Heavenway Park. They're not going to come all this way. It's already far enough to come to Albertson's. So why would they drive another mile and a half down the road to come to a new store? I just don't see that happening. So I would urge the council, the commission, to try and find another location for another grocery store if somebody will even come in and agree to build one. That's the stipulation right there. So I will know on the grocery store issue, the other, the resort, bring it on. I think it'll be good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience wish to be heard on this? And seeing no one jumping up right now, do we have folks on the line? And I guess I would...
She's going to need to make several phone calls.
I wondered about that. So I'll put out this phone number one more time, let folks know that the time is now. If you need to make phone calls, would it make any sense to take a couple-minute break? Or would you all propose?
No, she has to call them one at a time.
Ah, very good. So for virtual listeners wishing to be heard during the public comment period on the land management process item having to do with the proposed RV park and the proposed grocery and retail location, please call 702-589-9629. Thank you.
This is public comment? Please state your name.
Ron Henderson.
Go ahead.
I would like to... I'm against the building development on the property next to Gingerwood. The wife and I have lived in... Well, we're short timers. We're new. We've been here four years. We love this town. We do not need any big developments, superstores, shopping centers. We have enough space to where we can add what we have now. I just...
Can you turn your black screen down?
Yes, thank you. I think this town is fantastic the way it is. We love it. The people are fantastic. But if you want big box stores, it's not that far away, go there. We do not need this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Shall I go ahead and call?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were. Yes, please. Oh, yes, please.
Hi, is that Chris Stowe? Johnny again, or leave me a message and I'll call you.
Hello?
Hi, this is the planning commission meeting. Were you trying to call in for public comment?
Well, I did. And I just made a comment. And if I could, I hope somebody else adds to it.
Okay, is this Mr. Henderson?
Yes, it is.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right.
Hello?
Hi, is this Susan?
Yes, this is Susan.
Hi, this is the planning commission meeting. Were you trying to call in for public comment?
Yeah, a couple hours ago.
Please state your name for the record. We are just now on this item.
Okay, Susan Mansfield. Sorry, I've got noise going.
Go ahead. If you have the livestream on, can you please turn it down?
I don't have the livestream on. I've got television. Just a minute. No, it's still on. Anyway, it's not loud. Okay. No, I don't. I'm not listening to livestream. I gave up on that a long time ago. Okay. Go on.
Go ahead with your comments.
No, this is my answer. No, I do not like the idea of the grocery and retail center on 16 acres of land behind Gingerwood. So it's no.
All right.
Okay.
It's been noted for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Hello?
Hi, is this Ray?
Yes, it is.
Hi, this is the planning commission meeting. Were you calling in for public comment?
Yeah.
Please state your name for the record and go ahead with your comments.
First name, Ray. Last name, Segraes. S-E-G-R-A-V-E-S. And my comment is, you guys have had two different plots of land that's real close here to each other. The one that you guys are proposing to be having the grocery store, whatever it's going to be, at the other end of Gingerwood Mobile Home Park, I would like, myself, I see the mountains and everything from where I'm at because I'm out and back. But on the far end, it would also take away from most people's views at all. And I think that since it's going to be industrial like that, and I consider that industrial, not residential, I think you guys should do it on the other side by the veterans home. You've got a great big, huge thing over there. You've got four lanes going in and out now, as well as on Boulder Highway now. I think that would be better suited to go ahead and put a store, whatever you want, Costco, whatever. Okay. Besides, but I do know we really need a grocery store. That, I agree with wholeheartedly. One grocery store for as large as our town is, is not good enough.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, and I thank you. And thank you guys for everything that you guys do, okay?
All right. Your comments will be in the record. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Hello?
Hi, this is Stacy at the planning commission meeting. Were you calling in for public comment?
Yes, and I was coming, calling to...
Please state, please state your name. Please state your name for the record and then go ahead.
Carla, first name with a C. Boman.
All right, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just concerned about the project they are proposing to build, which is right behind Gingerwood Mobile Home Park. And I live here, 55 and older park here. And my concern is just the traffic, the wildlife back there, the view, the... You know. We're also worried that it's being bought for monetary purposes. In other words, somebody out of state buying it. And we live in the park that's now owned by an out-of-state person. And he's made a lot of difficult changes for us here in the park. So that's concerning to us, who live here. And I just don't think it's a good idea. There's a lot of other space in Boulder City, you know, by, like you said, by Chili Jilly's and all those empty buildings they could utilize. Even along where the bus stop is there, that's all empty. I don't know who owns it, but it seems like to me they're trying to build, start building more, and I don't like that.
All right, well, your comments will be entered into the record. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. My husband also has some comments. He's a voter also.
Okay.
Yeah, his name's different too.
Okay, please state your name.
David Boman.
Go ahead.
And I agree totally. I mean, it totally messed the place up if they did that. And all the wildlife back there that we take care of, it'd be wiped out. It's a fun nature area to walk around in. And I enjoy the walks and everything, but it's not going to be very good if they put stuff in there. And that thing, you know, it'd be Walmart or something coming in, you know? They need to keep Boulder City small, not all this big stuff. If you need it, go over to Henderson. They got it. I'm good enough. That's about it.
All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Please leave your message for...
All right. Well, Stacy, first and foremost, I want to thank you very much for for going through that process with us. So if I'm not mistaken, that close, that ends the folks that, or I think we've heard from everyone that wishes to be heard on this, on this subject. So with that, I'm going to close the public hearing portion of this agenda item. And with that, bring it back to the planning commission. Before I turn you loose for comments, motions, as we deliberate and think about this, let's remember that this is the first step of what I believe are four steps. And what we're tasked with doing here tonight is simply making a recommendation to the city council as to whether or not these two parcels of land are appropriate or would be an appropriate location for the uses that have been proposed. In one case, a grocery store. And in the other case, a RV and elite or high-end RV resort. We don't know if there's buyers or leases for either of these parcels. The question before us is really, do we feel that cities' utilities can support these uses? We've heard from the utilities director. And whether or not these would be appropriate uses if that would come to pass. After this, the city council would certainly have to look at it and come back to us. And ultimately, the city council will vote. And so to the residents of Boulder City, there are additional opportunities to weigh in. The question before this commission tonight is really, are those parcels of land suitable for for what has been proposed? And all that being said, I would turn it, let's return it back to the planning commission for deliberation and possible motions. At this point, the resolution before us combines the two two proposals. And I think we I think we would by necessity have to keep them together. But Susan, maybe you can help us out with that.
It's rather simple. You would still have one resolution. You can make recommendations on both items. The version in the packet is in the positive, you know, should recommend. But if the commission wants to recommend against both of them or for one and against the other, all we have to do is amend the resolution to add the word "not." You know, either it's should be recommended or should not be recommended. It's a simple change.
Perfect, thank you. I appreciate that. So let's hear some thoughts on this.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ernie. I have one question of staff. If they could, could they just remind me on the parcel, what the zoning is of the parcel that the 16-acre parcel being proposed for, I guess, this grocery store?
That parcel is actually zoned for flood control. And in talking to Public Works and our other staff, it will not, it was planned at one point for a flood control project, which is why it was zoned that way. That's no longer needed. But that's the current zoning.
So just as a follow-up, there is no build-out or infrastructure that would have to go in to develop that property because of the channel that's there?
I guess, Commissioner Yasi, are you referring to stormwater improvements? Are you referring to just general utilities?
Well, to be honest with you, I'm looking at the aerial of it. And it shows what looks like a stormwater runoff. So I guess that's probably more what I'm looking at is because of that, is there anything that would have to be done to maintain that, correct? I don't know how to say it. Does a cauldron have to be put in, for example?
Yes, it would have to be accommodated for that. And that would be something that would be an obligation of a developer if the property... And that would be something that would be an obligation of a developer if the property is ever developed.
Okay, so it would be a developer issue. Okay. Okay, that answers my question from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll start out. I think we've heard a lot of information, starting out with the RV resort proposal or parcels. Certainly, the Park and Recreation Department have concerns, but it sounds as though, I think, a genuine and reasonable developer can address those concerns. I think as far as airport, that is, seems that that's going to be up to the developers and, you know, their tenants to deal with. And I would imagine between now and ultimately, a project, or turning earth on a project, there's going to be a lot more study. We already have a volunteer to sit out in a lawn chair. But seriously, you know, clearly, there'll need to be more study on those types of issues. And I would imagine that prior to turning earth, there will be a lot of discussions between a developer and the, or Parks Department, Park and Rec Department, to address and ameliorate some of their concerns. I think as I look at the scope of other types of uses of this land, this seems reasonable to me. And again, this is, still has many steps. And all we're doing is recommending to city council as to whether or not this seems to be a feasible use of the property, if I'm not mistaken. So as far as that, I feel that that certainly can be a reasonable use and a boon to the community. And I think the report that was mentioned, certainly I provided my input when that came about a number of years ago, and tourism for me was an important aspect. So it seems as though this could be a reasonable, reasonable use of that land. Again, just in my opinion. Moving on to the grocery store. Certainly, looking at editorials, looking at social media, talking to my friends and neighbors, and living here for 25-plus years, I've also felt that another grocery store is very important. I think we certainly need one. And, you know, it seems like there were and are other business locations that might be appropriate. But having talked also to city staff to some degree, you know, I think a lot of effort has been made to look at other sites and to factor in what's important to grocers and retailers. Traffic count was mentioned. I think this is probably as reasonable a place as we're going to find without further searching, and again, this is my opinion. We absolutely, there's a long way to go between the planning commission here, say, suggesting to city council that this, that that use of that parcel of land is feasible, and actually getting someone on that land. And I think there, my recommendation would include the mandate, or not the mandate, but the suggestion to seriously look at any other possible sites, including north of the highway. I think that certainly has some merit. Railroad tracks pose a problem, certainly, but it seems like things are doable. And other parcels of land within the community. However, I certainly could support this parcel for that use, and that's all I have. Does anyone else have thoughts?
I have a question, just for clarification. Susan, you said that you could either approve both, or you could amend the resolution to approve one and not the other. I guess my question is, why are they bundled?
They've always been bundled in a single resolution. I mean, how you want to approach it is up to you. For instance, you may want to take a straw poll on one item to see whether the majority is in favor or opposed, and then a straw poll on the second item to see how it falls, and then somebody makes a recommendation. And as an example, if, I mean, obviously, all seven commissioners may not necessarily agree, you know, 100%, but it's a majority. So, you know, if whatever motion is passed, as an example, it could say that you recommend in favor of the RV request and against the grocery store request, or in favor of both, or against both. Whatever motion somebody makes, that's what you vote on.
I understand that, but I guess I fail to see the logic in having two very disparate land planning decisions as one resolution. That's all.
Do you have any questions? Basically, I think Susan's on the right track. At some point, if I don't, if we don't hear comments and share ideas, then we'll just do a straw poll, but...
I think, I think we need to separate, separate them. I think there's two different, two different, you know, things we're looking at. I mean, 74 acres is a very unique piece of property that it's not, not going to be, it would be hard to find private property to do that. And I'm for that, you know, because of the use and what it'll bring to town. I think the 16 acres for the grocery store, I don't think you need quite 16 acres to do a grocery store. And I don't know if the city is in the business of making sure people have land to give, to build things, and, you know, there's private property. I think that isn't a city that would be able to accommodate that, that they could purchase.
And I'm just going to address you first. We really don't need to separate, and we'll discuss them independently. I'd like to hear your views independently, which you've just provided. But then we can make a motion that either says yes both, no both, or yes one, no the other. And so I think we're, we can satisfy the need that way. Mr. DiTeresa?
Yeah, I just want to say to the people that are watching, people in attendance, that this is the first step in a very long process. Just if we vote tonight to add both parcels to the land management plan, it does not mean that it's a done deal and either project is going to happen. That being said, I think that the RV resort would be a very good fit for Boulder City. And obviously, the 16 acres for the grocery store shopping complex, you know, there is understandable opposition from the people that live in Gingerwood. But I'm in favor of adding both to the land management plan, just so we can get those discussions going and see what everybody in town thinks. So I'm ready to make a motion to approve both of them being added to the land management
Before we go with the motion, let's, let's just move through. Beth, what?
I'm in agreement with Matt.
Okay. Mr. Biaski?
Well, I think, again, we've all kicked this around, fundamentally, we're just looking at the suitability of the land based on locations in terms of the proposed uses. And of course, as Matt has said, there's still going to be a lot of steps that take place before that even would even possibly come to fruition. I clearly have no issues with the RV park. I think it's a, I have issues, but I think they'll work out as it goes through the process. But definitely, it's the right kind of project we need for the city. The grocery store, you know, I got mixed feelings. I mean, theoretically, we could look for other places, but, you know, if someone's willing to come in and buy it, there's a lot of steps that still have to occur. And it definitely has a location that would, is attractive to probably people that would be, or at least developers of supermarkets. So I could support both.
All right, thank you. Beth?
Just one comment about the grocery store. If that property is sold, that would go to the voters, so that the larger population would actually have a say in that, the end of the day, if that's the direction, if we deem the use that it's reasonable use.
That's a real good point, right. The voters, throughout the entire community, would have the opportunity to vote on that. Mr. Lassoff, what are your thoughts?
Hard no. You're not going to convince me a different way on the grocery store piece of property. What I see as the most probable thing that's going to end up happening is if we get to the point of ballot question on this, is people are going to hear grocery store, and they're going to say, yes, we need another grocery store in Boulder City. The reality of the market right now is, there is not an economical viability for a second grocery store in Boulder City. And nobody wants to hear that, but that's the real story, is that the economic viability of a second grocery store in Boulder City does not exist. And so what I think is probably going to happen, if we get to that point and the voters say yes, let's move on a grocery, on a second grocery store, we're going to sell it to some corporation that's going to sit on land and not build, and we're going to have another vacant piece, and we're not going to solve the problem that people are thinking that we need a second grocery store for. That's my opinion.
Very good. Certainly qualified opinion. Did you have anything else to add? Mr. DiTeresa has a comment as well.
And I'm in favor of the RV, just so we're clear.
Ah, very good. Thank you. Mr. DiTeresa?
Yeah, I know we're getting ahead of ourselves here, but I just wanted to remind everybody that we used to have three supermarkets in town. Albertson's, Vons', and the Central Market. And all three did very well. So, you know, we can do an economic feasibility study and see if there's enough demand. But like I said, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves.
All right, thank you. Do you have any additional comments, Mr. Marvin? You were prepared to make a motion. Would you like to continue on that?
Yes. Susan, correct me. Please correct me if I don't do this correctly. I'd like to make a motion to add both parcels of land to the land management plan.
That's fine. It's a motion to recommend approval of Resolution 1214 as written then.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and it's time for a vote. So the motion before us is to recommend approval of Resolution 1214 as written. So that would put, recommend that both parcels be moved forward into the land management process before city council. And that's the motion that's on the table. That's what we'll be voting on. So it's time for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
An opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Do we have two nays? Two nays or three? Two?
Two.
Okay. So, five in favor, two against. All right. Well, thank you, city staff. Thank you to the citizens of Gingerwood for expressing your concerns. We do sincerely appreciate that. And I think that ends that item, and we move to agenda item number five, allotment, development allotments.
No comment.
All right, and so that brings us to a final public comment period. And public comment at this point in the agenda is open to, virtually, anything on the agenda.
Anything.
Anything.
It is anything. I was afraid to say it out loud, but anyway, it's open to anything. For those watching, we have, I'll ask, does anyone in the audience wish to be heard on any subject tonight? Seeing none, we'll open it up to our virtual visitors. Please call in now to 702-589-9629. And we'll pause for 30 seconds. All right, hearing no further comments, we close this final public comment period and bring this meeting to a close. Thank you all for your patience.